Hey folks.
Hello, morning.
And that's not a bad, that's my backdrop.
It's pretty good.
Yeah, yeah, until the grape falls on you. Ezra, you showed up.
Yep, I'm here. Let me set the camera on one sec. Oh, we start at eleven, right?
Yep.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I'm still trying to take control of this thing. I'm in charge of the cats, so I had to come outside. All right. I guess we got everybody at this point. So I had sent to Jesse. Follow up list. Topics. On this. And briefly go through them. Some of it is. We left off basically with some architecture deal with. So we'll start. With that, basically, but as you might remember. We were still dealing with the back of the building like and then. There was some issues at the zoning at our last zoning meeting. The chip brought up about amenities basically on a site. So like to talk a little bit about that as well. Assuming Elliot has looked into that a bit. Then we're looking for where in fact the. Civil and DPWR basically on that particular piece at this point. And this a few other things, but those are primarily the, I think, the topics. So with that, Tom, could you read the intro, please?
Consistent with the governor's orders extending certain provisions of the open meeting law, every effort will be made to allow the public to view and listen to the meeting in real time. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial in number one three oh one seven one five. Eight five nine two meeting ID eight two four three eight six three. Two, three, nine, six passcode five, five, eight, six, seven, seven. Please only use dial in or computer and not both as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. This location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and or language assistance free of charge upon request. If you are a person with a disability and require information or materials in an alternate format. Or if you require any other accommodation, please contact the town's disability coordinator Willie Renault, town engineer. At seven eight one two four six six three oh eight as far in advance as the event as possible. Every effort will be made to grant your request. Advance notification will enable the town to make reasonable arrangements to remove an accessibility barrier for you.
All right, thank you. So this is. Once again. Five ninety six North Avenue continuation of the discussions with the zoning subcommittee. Resolve. To resolve. Issues before the zoning board. So with that, I think Peter, you and Andrew want to weigh in here and who do I give the?
Exactly. If you could give it to Steve, Steve's going to bring up the drawings.
All right.
He brought himself up.
He's got it.
Hello, Steve.
I'm here.
You're up, Steve.
So we've been working. Through the plans now flushing out. Both interior and exterior, but mostly working on getting. The coordination of the elevations and the floor plans to be pretty close to hundred percent. Keep catching things, but we're getting there. You know, where the bays are happening, where the building is protruding out right and left. Making sure that it's cohesive. We updated. Chris actually this morning with footprint. As it now exists, which is pretty close, but wanted to make sure he had the latest and greatest. If you scroll to the next floor plan, so here on the right and the left. Of the building, you can see where we're bringing some of the spaces forward a couple of feet. Yes, on the second and third floor where some of the bays now are coming up to those elevations as well. Happens fair amount on the front, so the front's middle section. So now we're working on bringing this. Something that Dana had asked us to explore, which is showing gables in the center rather than hips. And we have done that and we added a do it. It's in the attic, but just to give it some some detail. And we felt that that like that move felt that it it helps even break down side more. It's the center much more from. We've been working a fair amount with all those roofs and how they you'll see in the mass and model. We're not quite all these roofs come together. How deep are, where do they end? See development in the right, left, and then working in the rear elevation. The elevation that everybody think that's going to be the main entrance, but people live there. So trying to get that marked with a gable in the back. And then see if scroll to the coloring. So this is what we were in, you know, this is what we originally proposed. I see we don't have our gables in here. This is our original, original Steve, or did we get?
This is the last one and then. You know, the Dana had asked, you know, if we start to go with like a gray and a white scheme. He asked us to explore that. So kind of keeping a similar hierarchy to what we had before where. All of the masses that start to come up forward start to get, you know, vertical siding. That's a darker gray. Start to let the white trim pop. And then the white siding clapboard around the edges where the building starts to sit back. That's why kind of keeping the consistency in the last go around of that banding that breaks between the second and the third floor. Keeping that consistent, just to give it a little bit of a break with the verticality. And still kind of having the the soft edges that I know the zoning board like from the the previous discussion.
Dana, did you, did you ask us to do the building completely in white? We were debating. That a little bit, whether that's what you wanted, where did you want to see white and gray? You muted Dana.
I did like Chip's idea in the last ZBA meeting about making it to be look like one big estate. So I thought all white. Would be interesting to look at and actually even the opposite of this having the gray. On the body of the building in the.
On the body of the building, white, what happens when you do that?
Two.
What's that Jim?
No, go ahead. Keep on talking.
I just saw, when I looked at the elevation, Peter had sent me over a blank elevation that was all white. To work with player model colors and it seemed to look like one big estate or a grand hotel or something of that. I dare it seemed to look. Pretty nice to me, even to be all white. So those are the two things I was thinking about either the gray and the whites or just all white. Didn't really, I didn't really like the yellow that much.
You go Dana.
Oh, yeah, so. Those are the ideas. I don't know what you think of that, Jim.
Well, I was, you know, the the yellow picks up. Some of the residential colors, basically. Right now with the gray and whites and like you're starting to pick up the other two buildings, basically. The other problem with. Is like the one in front of us, forget the color for the moment. Is that the vertical nature of the each section of the building? Basically, in one hand, if you look to the far right. It breaks it up into a ser- like a series of buildings. All right, or a series of pieces of architecture. But the problem is the other side of that same story is because the gray in this particular case. And the verticality basically makes it feel higher. Than it is, and we certainly have made it higher without a flat roof. But we're doing that to imitate the neighborhood. So you can sort of say that's a good thing, but having it look more vertical makes it feel higher. And by breaking it up into segments like this, although horizontally. It breaks it down into a series of building shapes. At the same time, it makes it higher because it becomes more vertical. So it's it's difficult to say. What works best in in just in the architecture of this, I quite frankly, don't want to see. And and I'll tell you Crescent Street, we came up with two schemes, went to the board. And they're so strictly on color, not on architecture, basically. Is we we came to the board with two different color schemes and let the board select between those two. So I think. We're probably getting to a point where in fact. We need to sort of come up with two schemes. To to give to the board to let them select, but I'm just look, just letting you know from an architectural point of view. There's there's both a horizontal breakup in this form, but also a vertical nature. And the vertical nature is also broken up by. The bay windows and the change in window. So it it does make it does have impact on the vertical nature of it. And at the same time, breaking up horizontal. Can we go back to the yellow for a minute? So. The one thing the yellow does, it's a lighter tone. It's lighter than the gray. It's, you know, you've got a great, a little bit of a gray, white tone and the rest of it, it just feels, the building feels lighter. Than the than the gray. If I don't know whether you can pull both them up side by side or one over the other or something like that. To compare basically what I'm talking about.
So I was, I was going to say Dana, one thing that happens when we go all to the white. Is those bays tend to get lost that we think it tends to get very flat. I think.
Yeah, you you lose the character. You lose the character of it basically when you do that. You it it becomes one mass. You really want to continue the opportunity of using the color and the. Undulation of the building basically to break it up. And then you come down to what's the right color? To do that, to do one big massive building. You know, as some sort of grand hotel. You don't want it to look like a grand hotel. Because that makes it big. And so using the same color, basically, you end up with that. It may be what you want, but it's not what's going to fit into the neighborhood. Well. I think where we've come to right now with with this sort of scheme. Is we got something that breaks it up. We got the, remember, we got the landscape to also sort of hide or at least play with. The building architecture either end. So we're focused, we try to focus people towards the middle and not to the whole of the mass. Because the whole of the masses also shielded to some degree, understanding that the trees are not. You know, thirty feet tall because they won't go in it to thirty feet tall. There'll be something smaller and it'll take a while to fill out. Is that we use it where eventually the tree is basically going to do what we want them to do. So. If in fact, you're looking at a gray and a yellow or a gray and something else because it sounds like you're leaning towards a gray, white. I'm just using yellow and I understand how it might be a little strange. And there may be other colors in the neighborhood you could select from for a palette. And there may not even be that many yellow buildings there. It just, it just feels more residential. And and the gray, white mimics what the two original buildings on the street are. So. Even though the architect's different, it's still the same color. Now you may say you want to have those blend in both with the neighborhood and with the with the abutting buildings nearby. And maybe this works fine. And maybe if we looked at it. As we, I know we have an image with the whole streetscape there. With the three buildings and maybe you superimpose on that. These two different images and see what it looks like on the street. And, you know, do you still get the character of a neighborhood for this building with a gray? And yet, at the same time, friendly to your butters on the on the far right? Or is a yellow? The right thing? I don't know.
Steve, show the massing model, just to show Jim we're developing it, but it's worth starting to look at. Can see it coming together and as the other buildings on the street. This is what I was saying was teaching us, showing us the roof systems. Just how much we want to carry them. Through our, you know, how how real do we want to make all that system up there?
Yeah.
It it's a lot, right? There's a lot happening on that level.
Yeah, it's a, it's got to be some sort of fake mansard, so to speak.
Yeah. Yeah, can you, can you do that? Can you just kind of tilt it so we can see that roof a little bit?
Yeah, if you want to scare him a little bit, sure.
Well, yeah, I do. I want to scare him. It's not so so much, excuse me, on the right, but here you can see all the different intersecting hips and. And mansards going on.
Yeah, but but you're going to end up cutting a lot of that away on the inside.
Yeah.
Your mechanical overrides and mechanical systems and all that and. You don't want to spend the money on framing that. You want it, it's like a western storefront, basically. It's. From the street side, it gives you the character that you want. From the other side, it's just a fake wall.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of what we're trying to figure out, Jim, to your point is, you know, how much of it's fake, but we also don't want to create a water runoff nightmare up there.
Oh, yeah.
So it's going to be a balance. We're starting to work it out. You know, there's obviously going to be a little bit of tweaks with just how the roof lines start to die into each other, but. You know, it's a start and then obviously the other side is going to mimic that. So we'll be able to get, you know, one looking down at the other two buildings and then eventually start to. Get one from this side as well, looking over towards the Knights of Columbus. So. Work in progress, obviously, but you know, starting to pick away at it.
Well, with this, with this sort of model, putting colors in and detail and having the rest of the street there will give you, it will give us all a good. Idea as to how this blends in with the existing neighbors up the street. And the like. This is in SketchUp, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, because I've got, if you want, I got the houses in the neighborhood. I can give you, I can pass those on to you. You can drop them in.
Okay.
All right, let's go back to the. Tom, anything from you or Ezra?
No, I I just agree with the comment. I'd like to see the color and context. I can see where. You know, I wasn't wild about the yellow either, but I I like the idea. I do think the gray does make it look heavier. Of a building. So maybe there's some other color that you could, they could look at that kind of blends in a little bit more.
If you look at the two of them right now, they're about the same size and yet. The lower one looks smaller than the top one. I mean, it's just optically give you that impression. But anyway, and and I I understand the yellow and maybe it's a pale or yellow. Maybe it's, I hate to think blue, but it's probably some blue gray on the street or something like that. I'd have to go and drive around the neighborhood. There's certainly a lot of white on in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
But, yeah, no, this is better. Just like I said, I think maybe we do the same thing we did on Crescent. Is we come up with two colors. That if we're satisfied with the architecture, then we come up with two or even three colors basically and go to the board.
What'd you take on the gable versus the hip, the center?
It's interesting. And you know, I hadn't focused, I I had seen it, but I hadn't focused on it until you mentioned.
Yeah.
And and. That may be the thing that makes it higher.
Yeah.
You know, that that that's the reason the yellow. Doesn't look as high. Because there's no pointy thing up there, you know, white basically capped that thing.
Yeah.
But that's an interesting point. I mean, I saw it and I thought, okay, that's nice, but I hadn't paid attention to it in relationship to the previous concept.
So if you switch the colors, Peter, from. Just taking the yellow and made that white. So the gables wouldn't just kind of stick out on top of the gray. I wonder how that would look.
Yeah, we, I think, I mean, I think we, no, I think we definitely will try that. I think if you if you go to the CAD drawing. Steve, just go to the CAD drawing for a moment in the front. Just take it, that kind of removes the color, but just. It definitely makes the building look higher, right? No matter what, even if you take the color out. Because your eye doesn't see the roof laying away from. It's coming more prominent.
Well, it also makes it higher in the fact that we put peak, we put peaks on it as opposed to a flat roof.
Right, right. Because truthfully, it isn't any higher, right? It is, the top of that isn't any higher than the top of the hip, but. The look of it, right? The feel. You trying to toggle in the gray, Steve, into the.
Yeah, I'm trying to just do it in real time.
Yeah, okay.
I just think it looks a little odd without the center being prominent. It looks smaller than the two sides, you know, like the middle doesn't stand out. Like the original drawing.
Yeah, so you feel the gable helps the middle stand out, right?
I think it does. I mean, looks without it, it looks a little funny, like the middle looks smaller than the two ends and it's. I thought we were trying to get the middle to be the focal point.
Yeah.
You're you're absolutely right on that point. Basically, we were trying to get people's eyes to the middle. But is is the middle. Cause it to look bigger? I mean, on one hand, we want it to look bigger and predominant. But. Is it just make too much, give it too much attention to also to the hips on these things? I don't know. It's interesting question.
Yeah.
Is it, is it possible that, I mean, it sounds like when the, when the board was looking at this, I think they were mostly excited by the. The landscaping and the trees that were going to block a lot of it and the fact that we had this pushed back so far. So. I'm wondering if in the. In the limited time we have, it maybe is. Maybe not a bad idea to make sure we get the landscaping. I mean, if we're basically done with all that and we're just picking colors, then I think we're. Nearly at the finish line, but if there are other issues around. Landscaping, screening. Lighting, any of those to work out, I'd want to be sure we at least included those too.
Well, I think that in the conversation from the board. They certainly were asking. To see the effect, and I think we've mentioned it previously here at meetings. To get that rendering with, you know, some of that landscape filled in, so. You get a better feel for it. The 3D. Sketchup model basically is helpful. But a rendering is also helpful, they serve two different purposes in a way. So. I agree with you in that, you know. We're at at one point, basically, coming, we're coming together with all little pieces at this point and. Landscape certainly. Is part of those pieces. That have an effect on the architecture.
I mean, mostly, I just, I I know that architects like buildings, so we enjoy thinking about. This building and how to make it look as good as possible, and I think the board, the board certainly wants a building that looks good, but. The sense I got was they'd be even happier with a building that wasn't there. You know, that was invisible. And so that's the challenge is how can an architect make a beautiful building? That no one notices.
Well, that's that's what I started out with very beginning was make the. Make it look like. The edge of this. Grove that is there. Is still there, basically, but with trees that actually look like they're gonna live beyond two days.
Yeah, that's right, I'd want to be sure we at least nailed that piece. So no matter what the building was there, that the board's need there was met.
Yeah.
Do you think the windows in the gable make it look like a four story?
You know, I do, I think, and I don't notice it so much in the in the CAD, but when I see it in the in the colored rendering. Yeah, it looks like another another floor up there. And maybe. I think we should try it without that, just try some detail.
You you guaranteed that someone's gonna ask that question, guaranteed, whether it's be a board member or somebody in the audience, well, I mean, you. You didn't, you got rid of four floors.
Yeah.
Then you're gonna spend, and then you're gonna spend the next half an hour explaining. It's only, there's no headroom up there, it's all framing, there's there's no way in heck you're gonna get anybody up there.
Yeah. So to Dana's point, maybe we just make it go, get it out of there. Do that.
I don't know, let's let's go back around the rest of the building, we spent a lot of time on the front.
Yeah. So that's that important left side. Coming. Through, we're trying. Ends that we created. The second and third floor all across the. The left elevation comes to the back, then on the right elevation.
Did you have, didn't you have this one in color?
Did we, we did, I think, and the last presentation, but I don't think we do today.
Oh, okay.
We.
When we, wasn't the. On the side view.
Yeah.
Left side. Didn't the second floor step back? A third floor step back a bit?
So, so we we made that band. Like it, this band, I don't know if you see my cursor, but the band that breaks the two floor. We made it look like that upper floor was stepping back. Even though it's not, but the band is built out to do to create that illusion.
But I think the other one actually did step back.
Did it, it may have.
I mean, so it was, it was physically. It hadn't physically more of a break.
I wonder if we can look back at that, but I'm sure we can. So you're asking if we can take that and we.
Well, look, look back at it, it just, it breaks back, basically.
Yeah, yeah.
And only on those two back corners, basically, and from this elevation. As I remember, it looked pretty good.
Yeah. Okay, no problem.
All right.
My quick question on this left elevation. There would some in the landscape plan, there were some trees that were gonna be planted along this side of it. With the bump up, what what's happening with those trees? Have you looked at that yet?
Yeah, we, Elliot, no, we haven't looked at that yet, this is. It's gonna result in a different. Approach to to that elevation. So we may not. There may be fewer trees or there may be no trees in that heaven, we haven't. Put our heads together on that yet.
All right, if you can just make sure that we revisit that so we can see what it's gonna look like, that'd be great.
Sure.
Oh, actually, I was hoping we'd see that, but. Okay. Peter Reer. Again.
Yep, there's the rear.
Okay, it's fine with me right now. Anybody else comments?
No, I, Jim, I like the gables and I don't mind the windows up there, even though someone's gonna ask, I think something to break up that little area that.
Well, we certainly. Can show it. It can easily go away.
Yep.
It's not, it's not built, so. You know, it's just a matter of. Pulling out the little electric eraser and. Pulling it off the screen.
We can do a vent too, right, Peter?
Say it again, Dana.
We can, we can also do a vent there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oval vent or something like that.
Well, it could, yeah. It could, it could be like a half moon shaped vent too.
Yeah.
You know? You may, you may want to, you may want to use it mechanically for something.
Jim, they're gonna ask me when we. What an electric eraser is, so I don't know if you should say.
Why don't? They probably you know, don't even know what a racer is. They come on at the end of a pencil, what's a pencil? Particularly, what's a mechanical pencil?
That's right.
All right, if we got no more comments on this, can we move on to the landscape? And I guess I've got to give Elliot some space here. All right, Elliot, you got the show.
Can you see that?
Not yet.
Here we are. So this focuses on the front elevation, particularly. Relative to Chip's comments regarding creating more of a grander. Entrance to the to the front of the building. This rendering shows the proposed sidewalk in here, I I looked at the the relative elevations of how to. Make the steps work from the north half. Sidewalk up to the vestibule of the building, so we've, we have three or two sets of steps with. Three risers in there at seven inches, so it's an easy, easy climb up there. Added a little bit of interest to the size of buttress, the the steps with. Some slopes cheek walls. On both sets. And then also wanted to continue a horizontal sort of. Visual platform. Retain wall that that also will, it probably won't be very tall, but. If it's not, then it could be a two faced wall. So in other words, we want to get some elevation out of. Out of the landscape and it can be a nice backing for the the flanking. Plant beds on either side, we could have some. Path lights or some kind of lighting. Or flush lighting. Illuminating the the top landing here. And then focusing on either side, we still have that arced walkway. With, and I introduced some bench seating facing out towards north half, I didn't want to. Put it on the other side and face the building, I think that would be a little awkward. For the residents in the in the building and also. The the action is really happening across the street. The foundation planting and the bedlines remain the same. And. Essentially, these flanking tree groups as well, these are flowering trees on either side. Originally, I talked about having these be fastiget trees, which means tall columnar trees narrow in form. They can be deciduous, which means that they're gonna lose their their leaves in the in the fall through the winter. So they can still have some structure, but not quite as. You know, shielding to or screening to the building itself. Or, on the other hand, they could be, they could be larger shrubs that that also have the same characteristic, but in either case, I was thinking of doing. Doing deciduous in in this area here. So we've kept the street trees at the same cadence, originally had, I think, six or five, now brought it down to four, so we're really concentrating on this front. Front entry from the street and. And and just resolving the the walkway with with two entries. At two street trees at the ends on that side. And relative.
Now, there's street trees on. The other side of the walkway.
Yes, this is the proposed walkway, Jim, here. This is landscape area between the curb.
No, I'm talking, I'm talking about, I'm talking about on the other side of the curved walkway. Further down the street, further up the street.
Well, to the left, we have planned left, we have the Knights of Columbus, obviously, and then we have the the other building, so we. We pick up, I think, four, given the given the cadence and the rhythm and and what we. What the residents, the butters. Including the the board want to achieve is is a good number to have. It's not obscuring the building, it's it's really gonna. Create that. That layering effect from the street. And from the residents across the street without fully blocking the building, we've got nice coverage along the. Foundation, and then we have those two flanking groups of trees here, the smaller ones. Which are gonna, which are gonna. Increase the the visual screening because they'll be lower. Than these taller street trees, so you have this upper level, which is also gonna soften the building with the. The larger street trees here, and then these are gonna be medium to to smaller height, that's going to be under the branching. Ultimately, under the branching of these street trees, so you get this double layer of of screening as well as. Visual softening of the building.
Oh, Elliot, when, if you could just describe, so the four street trees, how tall would they be when you planted them?
If it was a perfect world, I'd like to see him go in at three, three and a half, possibly four inches, so that's gonna give it, depending on the. On the species, that's gonna give us our eighteen, twenty, twenty two feet. Of height, it's also going to be appropriate with. I think the the massing of the building, because if we go in with a, you know, one and a half inch caliper or something, it's gonna look like. It's just not gonna be.
Yeah.
And what relating to what's what's out there.
And what would you expect him to grow to?
Given the environment, it's a streetscape. We take proper care of putting them in, which should happen. I'd like to see him get to ultimately around thirty feet or so.
Okay, now, that that's in the public realm, right? That's still part of the public land?
Yeah.
And and maybe you already talked about this, but I'll ask the question anyway. I'm assuming you're gonna sprinkle your own property, are you allowed to bring your sprinkle lines out onto the public property?
Not, not that I know of.
To answer that question, I think we'll need to work that out in the decision to make sure we have the proper authority to do that.
Yeah, no, I I I agree with you. I I. I gather from others that we've done. There is that possibility, basically. That go beyond. Into the public property, like I said, I've already talked to a few people about. Trees in the public area and. You know, using that as sort of private space, so to speak, but at the same time, dressing up the street. And Bill basically is very much supportive of that. But as I found out that. Bill doesn't necessarily. Deal with the species. On the street. So there is another, I forget who his name, what his name is right now, but my wife deals with him quite often. And we would probably want to match what's at the. Other two sites, because they've got trees there that are in alignment. Pretty much with these, so it forms the street trees, basically, on that end of. North half. Whatever they might be.
I I did have a conversation with Bill Renault. And he, I was looking for that. Approved tree list.
Yeah.
Wasn't one that's, there isn't one that's been developed yet. But he is open, is very open and and very, he's he's excited about this. Whatever trees we put in there. He'll, he'll probably be okay with it. One thing we did talk about was the fact that if you get lake species of trees. If if the tree, one tree has a disease, it may. It may spread to the other tree, so. In the interest of. Kind of stemming that problem in the future, maybe we end up with a different type of street tree here than the ones down at the other buildings.
I can, I can look, I probably have. The list of planting. For the other two sites that I can pass you, pass through, Jesse, on to you. So at least you know what the heck happened theoretically happened over there. Because sometimes things change and we don't know it, all right?
It's really just the harsh environment of of clearing off the sidewalks and, you know, with the small plows and and. And that they're sort of out in no man's land and it it's important to put the trees in, plant them. Well, to begin with. To give them a good, a good head start.
Yep, yep, yep. So like the the tree on the right. On the at the sidewalk edge. Between that and the next site, is there another tree?
I believe there is, yes. Yeah, I think we have another, we've got another group of trees. Evergreens, that's the particular corner, Jim, that you were recommending more. Be heavily screened.
Well, that, yeah, yeah.
We have that, and we do have one more street tree that extends down the property.
Okay, all right. Because I, you know, when you talk about regimenting, basically, or spacing. We really sort of need to keep the cadence with the previous, the other site. Run it through this site, basically, so we get that. Boulevard sort of appearance on one side of the street, anyway.
Right, right.
Okay.
Quick, quick question, Jesse, when you say that'll have to be worked out in the decision. About the, you know, planting and improvements on the public property. I mean, my understanding is the the board. Can't, in their. Conditions, they can't require you to do something. That you haven't, you asked for a waiver, if you're gonna need permission to do it. You need to get permission or ask for a waiver if there's something the board can grant. The board can't just sort of require it and make it then. As if they've granted permission.
Yeah, under understood, Ezra. I, I'm not sure that there's anything to get a waiver from on that, that's something that I'll want to talk with town council about.
Yeah, so you're you're riding herd on that, then?
Yeah, 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 I'm on top of that, we, we've reached understandings with council on on the Tarrant Lane project for similar sort of. You know, landscaping in the public way and work in the public way, so I think that's something we can work out.
Great, I just, I I want the board to be able to look and say what they're seeing is what they're approving and what they're requiring. You know, but that's sort of between. You and and different and town council and different departments. To be sure that what's required and what you're agreeing to is something you can build.
I think where the board has been. Over the last number of projects been very, particularly on the larger ones. Is been very closely working. With the BPD, other people in town, basically. To beautify the edge of the street. Because we're not gonna see the town do much on the edge of this, of the edge of the street, so it's better off. To have it embedded in the project. Even to have the project take care of it over time. And it it serves the town's purpose, basically, to look better and nicer. It serves the project's purpose, basically. To provide basically a backdrop. For a building, basically, at the. to provide, basically, a backdrop for a building, basically, at the same time. So if all these entities can come together and come to some sort of decision, basically, that works for all parties, then, you know, what you're looking at is, is that, is that sort of appearance, which is really what I think we all want. And for the neighborhood, basically, it's, it softens their opinion of just this big bloody box sitting there. It has some character. It has planting. It's taken care of well. You know, the only thing they can start to complain about after a while is the parking or the traffic or something like that, so.
But, but just whether that requires an easement or a maintenance agreement or whatever it is.
Yep, 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 yep.
It probably does. Ezra, I think it, it probably not an easement. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think that that's necessary, because I think, you, you know, we don't want to rule out the possibility that at some point in the future, maybe engineering or DPW wants to take this over on their own, and, and they would have the right to do that, but if we, as long as we have a maintenance agreement, I think that's, that's sufficient, and that, that, that sort of thing, I think, would fall, fall in line and be analogous with the sort of situation where you've got residents who have frontage on a street, have to clear the public sidewalk of snow, things like that, just maintain.
Yep. I mean, the sprinkling is a little bit more complicated, but I think you can work that out with town council. Put it in the maintenance agreement, and the board can basically say, subject to the plans you showed and the maintenance agreement.
We can, we can have the sprinklers on the project property and just have it shoot over the sidewalk.
There you go.
All right. Back, do we have anything else to show on landscape?
So that's what I have for today.
Okay, so we have the side and we have the rear, basically, and I don't, I suspect we're only gonna get one more meeting, and so I think you're gonna have to start concentrating on the rest of the perimeter of the building, or at least get back to it based on the architecture at this time.
Okay.
It, it, yeah, would be good to be able to see some form of rendering or however you want to put it together, what the building's gonna look like with the landscaping installed.
Absolutely. Similar, similar to the ones we did, had done, or Peter had done on Salem Street, basically, where we got them from both directions.
Yeah.
Got that, you know, saw everything and how it looks. So, yeah, we do need that, particularly going in, assumingly, we're going to the fifteenth of August. Basically, gonna need all this stuff pulled together. Because that may be the point where this group sort of folds its cards and it's left with the, with the zoning board itself. You know, if we have color renderings, not color renders, but, you know, more colors to select from, if we can work that piece out, get the landscape basically resolved, basically, all the way around. And these things I'm talking about for the next meeting before the zoning meeting, because I want to go to the zoning meeting with all of the things taken care of, basically. And that will also give, I think, the team here to Jesse and the team, basically, to start to talk to CommCom as well, because we need to get that out of the way, obviously. So with that, I guess we're going to Civil. Let me.
So Jim, you don't have to share your screen. I can give you a quick update. Chris, I just.
Yeah.
So we, we received what I'll call a sort of a final, final footprint from Peter's office earlier this morning, and now I'm gonna turn my focus on updating the, updating our site plan to, to reflect that new footprint and update the stormwater, the stormwater design accordingly. We'll also be incorporating Elliot's walkway and landscaping work to make sure that we get the water to go where we need it to go, to meet stormwater management. And then before I dive into the, to the redesign completely, I'm also gonna, I'm also gonna reach out to Bill Renaud and just have a quick sit-down with him to make sure we're on the same page with, with respect to the, to the zone, the zone A situation out back. I know you've had a couple of discussions with him. I want to make sure that we're on the same page before we submit something revised to him, and, and that'll be the, the documents that he will review and, and, you know, give us comments back on. So that's, that's what we stand on that.
Right. So you'll have that hopefully closed out by next meeting, this subcommittee meeting?
That would be, that would be ideal, but much will depend on on Bill's schedule as well, you know, in order to review it, but we'll hope to get it into his hands before the next time we meet.
Yeah, because I, like I say, in August, on the fifteenth, I'd like to have this, you know, ninety-five percent closed or ninety-five percent from our, from the subcommittee's point of view, basically. There might be, you know, they might ask, the board might ask us, can you go out and look at this with you guys or something else, basically, but I'd like to think that we're pretty much closed as far as this subcommittee when we go to August fifteenth, which means we only have one more meeting, sort of pull all the loose ends here, which there are still quite a few on the detail side. And Peter's, Peter knows that eventually he's gonna be asked, basically, two things. One is materials and lighting on the building, on the site, basically, what's going on. There's also samples, basically, they're gonna, we're gonna want to see type of stuff, particularly for the August meeting, but even before that August meeting. The renderings we've already talked about. Color elevations, like we said.
I think to the extent possible, it'd be important that the next time the board sees this, it's, it's either a number of kind of clean bill of health memos to say, this is all set, it's been reviewed by town officials, or, as Jim says, you know, a couple of choices that are, you know, A or B is what they're, they're being presented with. Because we don't want this to then turn into sort of more indecision or additional things that need to be looked into, and then it goes back into committees or.
Yeah, that's, that's sort of why I like to stick to two colors as opposed to three, because you'll, you know, even, even with the last one, Crescent Street, basically. Yeah, I, I, quite frankly, I flipped back and forth, and I finally decided on a lighter color on, in that particular case, because again, it was a massive building in a single, well, actually, multi-family neighborhood, but a lot of more originally, originally single buildings, single family buildings. So I still lend myself to lighter colors, I think. So anyways, I, I think we have to, even if we, even if we're looking at three options ourselves, or four options, color in, maybe there's a gable end, a not a gable end, there's a window, there's not a window. We come out of our next meeting, basically, with two options, basically, for the board, or one option, but I, I'd rather leave them with some opportunity to have a footprint on this thing. But I think what we got, where we're going with the landscape, I think, is good. Where we're going with, where we're going with the building is good. Like I say, we're down, we're down to the latter part of this thing. That, we just need to, we need to hone in on all this stuff.
We, can we talk about timing, Jim? You mentioned August fifteenth and some upcoming dates. I have August tenth and the twenty-fourth for the two next zoning board of appeals meetings. Am I missing something on the fifteenth or?
The meeting's actually the seventeenth. We only meet once in, once a month in the summer for July and August.
Okay.
We're out of our cadence of second and fourth.
Yeah. July and August, we, it's like Christmas time, basically. We, we have one meeting in those months.
But it's the seventeenth or the?
Seventeenth is the Wednesday, yeah. Quick question, too, just before I forget. The, the notion of a, an area, like an amenity area was raised last time. So as you're looking at your site plan, have you guys had a chance to think about that? I mean, I think it was Chip that brought it up, an area to put a grill, an outdoor amenity area for the residents.
Yeah, the plan is to include a grill station or two, probably two, and another couple of seating areas in the rear as well as bike rack areas.
Yeah, they're just gonna want a response to it when we go back to the board.
Yeah, there's, there's, it's nice the way it is placed at the front, and whether it's utilized as much or not, it's still a staging area. The rear is gonna get more used. I think people are gonna, you know, park drop off the groceries, whatever, basically, or just sit out there and, as people come and go, chat, sit down and rest, whatever. So that back entry probably needs more amenities in the way it's formed, so we do need to get that resolved, and the side yard, and just what we do around the rest. Even, I'll tell you right now, Chip focuses on landscape. He focuses on trees and shrubs and plants. So we really need to have our act together in, in that whole landscape scheme of things, because he will burrow into that, basically. Just to let you know. Anyway. So I'm looking at August. I don't know what everybody's schedule is. The seventeenth, like we say, is is our next full ZBA meeting. So maybe it, maybe this happens on the week of the eighth.
That probably makes sense, so we can, we can up, update what we can before that, and then if there are additional changes that we need to get in before the Friday filing deadline, we can, we can do that.
Well, I don't know. How's everybody's schedule look on the week of the eighth?
I'm around, Jim.
I got a lot of availability.
I'm, I'm actually on vacation that whole week. But, but I can, I can call in, or, I mean, it seems like we're, we're checking off final items now, so.
Do you want to say Thursday morning again, Jim? That seems to work pretty well for this group.
Yeah, the eleventh at eleven works for me.
Work for me.
Well, that evening, just for those who want to know, is yearly meteor showers.
Oh.
Twelfth and thirteenth, be prepared for meteor showers, basically. Look towards the Big Dipper. Now that you've got that piece of information. Yeah, the eleventh works for me as well. Time.
Same time.
Eleven o'clock?
That works for me.
Yep.
And I will get Gail to post this as soon as I get off for the afternoon, so we're on for the next meeting. So Peter, you got a little bit of work to run up.
Yeah.
Or maybe not you, but maybe your minions.
Together, we'll work together.
And Elliot, you've got a chunk, big chunk. Peter's, Peter's ahead of you, so.
Elliot, quick question for you. For your amenities areas, are you looking at adding impervious? Because that's gonna affect Chris's stormwater.
I think the paving can be dry-set.
Okay.
As it, in this seating areas, and, and the front walkway is dry-set as well. I don't, unless, unless the, you know, the town is, is looking for something like, you know, the tuminus or, but I was thinking a, a nice paver out there would be particularly, you know, ideal for aesthetics.
The sidewalk, the town sidewalk will be what the town sidewalk is, which is probably gonna be asphalt. But within the site, within the site, basically, certainly, pavers can be, can be done, basically. Just to remind everybody, Chip is gonna be looking for granite curbing, so you gotta deal with that, and we need to have irrigation throughout the site. That's a norm for us as well. I don't like the place to look deteriorated in, well, like the weather we're having right now. Let's see, anything else I can think of? No, I guess not. So with that, I'm gonna close this meeting unless anybody's got anything they want to add. And we'll be back together on August eleventh at eleven o'clock, eleven eleven. And I'm closing this meeting of five ninety-six North Avenue zoning subcommittee design review. So thank you all.
Thank you.